All right, we're going to get started here. Good evening. Tonight's public meeting is in regards to the Village of Morton's ongoing process to eliminate the mineral and biological buildup from our water mains. My name is Craig Lautermilk. I'm the Director of Public Works here at Morton. And with us tonight, we have two representatives with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, Steve Vance on the end, and David McMillan. We also have a Water Treatment Superintendent, Bob Burton, and our Water Distribution Superintendent, Paul Allman. This is not a public hearing. It's also not a mandated meeting from the EPA. Basically, this is an informational meeting where we want to get your questions, we want to answer your questions, and give you time to speak after we kind of give a summary of what we're doing in the water treatment process. Tonight, we have a very simple agenda. We're going to discuss the current status of the water treatment process. There'll be a question and answer period where you can come up to the podium and speak, and we'll answer your questions. And lastly, it'll be a public comment period where if you had comments about anything regarding water or anything else with the village, come and you can still speak and provide comment. We definitely want to hear from you. That's why we're having this meeting. If you have questions after the meeting, or in the coming weeks, we still want to hear from you. There are multiple ways to get your questions asked. You can contact us by phone. You can also send us your comments by mail, email, and also through the village website. I would also encourage you all to sign up for E-Alerts. That's the quickest way to get the updated information straight from our office. To start, I'm going to have Bob Burton give a summary of our current water treatment process, and then Paul Allman will follow with a summary of the distribution system. Bob?
We have three different water treatment plants in the Village of Morton. They all treat the water the same. They all have the same water source. We get our raw water from what's called the sand codyaquifer. Our wells are basically 275 feet underground. That's where the pumps are at. Water's brought up out of the ground to the plant, and it goes, the first process that goes through is the aerator, which is to remove the iron, manganese, and other gases that are in our water. Chlorine is added as it enters the reaction basin just for further iron removal and bacteria removal, if there is any at that time. Water's picked up by our high-service pump in the plant, pushed through the filters. All our water is filtered. We add potassium permanganate for iron and manganese control. Once it goes through the filters, roughly two-thirds of it is softened. We use Z-Lite softening. And as it exits that, it's mixed back together with the unsoftened water. We run about seven to eight grains hardness in our water. We then, as it's exiting the plant, we add fluoride, a little more chlorine. We add the chemical Oracle now, and we add an orthophosphate. And that just pushes it out into the system and to the towers, and it's all Paul's after that.
Good evening. As Craig mentioned, my name's Paul Allman, and with the help of the four other water distribution employees, I oversee the water distribution department here in Morton. The distribution system, which includes the three water towers, is made up of a network of pipes, valves, hydrants, and service taps. And that carries the finished water from the treatment facility to you, the customer. This is accomplished by moving the water underground through our 109 miles of pipes that we call mains. And these pipes are typically a larger diameter pipe than you're used to seeing within your homes or businesses. And these sizes range anywhere from 16-inch down to 2-inch, with the majority in Morton being six- and eight-inch pipes, six-inch water mains. And these pipes are also made of various materials, those being transite, cast iron, ductile iron, PVC, which is polyvinyl chloride, and HDPE, which is high-density polyethylene. And this network of piping is interconnected and running through the village with as minimal dead ends as possible. So we are on what we call a looped system, what the industry calls a looped system. Morton is a looped water system. Within the distribution system, there are also 1,200 valves that we are in charge of maintaining and overseeing. They're in place for water control and for isolating areas if needed. They're here, again, for maintenance purposes, for flushing purposes, and you'll hear a little bit more about that possibly tonight, and during construction builds and that. So there are water valves also out in the system. And then these mains that are all hooked together are typically running down one of the sides of your streets in town. And then in front of each property, we make a connection, what we call a water tap. And on the water tap, it becomes a smaller pipe. And this pipe there, again, being a smaller pipe, it can range anywhere from inch and a half to three-quarter in residential applications. And that's the line, that's the water line that comes into your house and then through the meter. This is also the area where the village's responsibility changes to the property owners. Within the service line, typically out front on the right-of-way area, on the right-of-way line, is an underground valve we call a curb stop. A lot of times, you'll see those in your yard. It's about that four-inch little round metal disc. That's the lid so we can access that valve. And this is the boundary line, per se, of where the village's responsibility stops, and then the homeowner's responsibility picks up on that water line. And then this is also a place, for any reason, if your house needs to have the water service turned off, we're able to access that valve and turn it off. And that would be for, you know, leaks, or any kind of repair, or any other reason the homeowner would want their water off, especially in an emergency situation. And then, of course, another responsibility for the distribution department is the operation and maintenance of our 923 village and privately-owned fire hydrants that we're in charge of. And they're speckled all throughout the city limits. They're probably the most visible asset that we take care of, mainly because they're above ground, because a lot of our work and a lot of the stuff we do is below ground. But these are sticking up. And also, they are the things that are within your neighborhood, and sometimes maybe right outside your front door in your front yard. So those are the things that are very noticeable to the public. And of course, that's also the thing that we want the fire department to be able to see and hook up and be able to use on a very quick basis. And then really, along with responding to the various service calls, the Julie Locate tickets that come in all the time, and then helping all the other public works departments, that's pretty much just a quick overview of the way the water distribution department's set up here in Morton. And as Craig stated earlier, if there's any more questions about that or something, you'll have a chance to ask, or if you want to see me later after the meeting, that'd be great. So that's it. Thanks, Craig.
All right. Thank you. Now, the main reason we're here today is to give you a summary of where we're at today in the process. You've obviously seen the papers. You've seen the letter we've sent out. That's why you're here tonight. But we've been working very closely with the IEP, specifically these two gentlemen here, since mid-January. That was the time when we issued the citywide boil order as a result of an unsatisfactory test for total coliform bacteria. These bacteria only indicate that conditions could exist where harmful bacteria could grow. I want to stress that, to date, no toxic or fecal bacteria have ever been detected in our drinking water. When coliform bacteria is detected in our monthly sampling, a boil order is required until disinfection and retesting confirm that the risk of contamination has been eliminated. The IEP has regulatory oversight throughout this. In mid-May of this year, we, along with our consultants and the IEP, concluded our investigation to determine that our sporadic bad samples were the result of the cumulative effect of mineral and biological buildup along the inner walls of our water main. Our goal is to eliminate this buildup that is present and prevent future growth in a safe and controlled manner. To accomplish this, we proposed a new chemical oxidant feed system in conjunction with a new rigorous flushing program. On June 6th of this year, a construction permit application was submitted to the IEP to facilitate this work. In late July of this year, we began feeding this new chemical, called Oracle, at all three treatment plants. The new chemical is a non-toxic, non-hazardous chemical, and is basically an organic removal agent and a chlorine enhancer. It has many benefits, but the main one is to clean the distribution system prior to the flush. Historically, the Village of Morton has used a conventional flushing program. This has been successful as the water quality has remained consistent throughout. This is where we open hydrants without closing valves to isolate specific water mains to flushing. As a result, adequate velocities typically are not achieved in order to scour the pipes to remove the buildup. Our goal is to flush this buildup out of the system and not just move it to another pipe. Our consultant, Crawford Murphy and Tilly, is developing a new unidirectional flushing program, which will identify the general sequence of pipes to be flushed, the sequence of valve operations, and the estimated duration of the flush. This will be done in an organized sequential manner where we can now flush water from a clean source out. By cutting off flows and isolating the mains, we can now achieve the scouring velocity needed to remove the buildup. Another thing involved with this flushing program is where we will sample at a residual hydrant for chlorine residuals, turbidity, to determine when to move on to the next section. This has not been done in the past. We want to make sure that we flushed adequately to remove the buildup as we move forward. With that, I also want to give you a little bit of what to expect going forward. We will begin this flushing program on September 22nd. That's the plan right now. The consultant is finishing up the south end of this area as we speak. We hope to have the information here within the next couple of weeks to begin our preparation. Maps will be available on the website when we get the information. So within the next couple of weeks, we'll have maps on the village website. That will give the location of the flush and the dates. Obviously, things may change throughout, and we'll update it. But that'll give you a chance to look and see where we're going to flush during this new program. Also, I wanted to speak a little bit about the advisory board. We've got a lot of questions on that. I just wanted to kind of sum that up, that we are trying to be proactive with you because there is a possibility of boil orders during this project or this process. There is not a boil order tonight. There is not going to be one, or we don't expect there to be one in the next several weeks. But during this process, when it starts, there is a possibility. I ask you to stay tuned. Sign up for E-Alerts. You'll get the most up-to-date information. We're sharing this information with you so that you, as a consumer, can also be proactive on your end to hopefully lessen the inconvenience that it is. We take a lot of pride in the work we do, but we also want to be upfront with you if there's a possibility of this. With that, I'd like to open up the question and answer. If any of you would like to come to the podium, please do so at this time. I guess, raise your hand, and you can come up to the podium. Yeah, if you could please state your name and your address.
I'm Joan Dittmer. I'm the owner of Maxine's on Main, at 208 North Main. You said, what would determine if you needed a boil order again? What kind of factors?
The first thing is, we take our monthly samples. This was the cause of the previous, in January, the boil. So when we take our monthly samples, if we were to get an unsatisfactory test sample for total coliform, then we would have 24 hours to retest. If those came back unsatisfactory, then we would have to issue a boil order.
And if the flushing is done sequentially in certain locations throughout the village, would the boil order be just for those locations, or is it mandatory throughout the?
I'm going to let David speak to that one.
My name's Dave McMillan again. And what we are looking at doing right now, because they're going to be doing this flushing that is kind of a directional flushing, we're going to evaluate whether or not we can kind of partition the system so that if we get, as we progress out through the system, if there's a way for us to isolate portions of the system, then we can kind of, you know, only issue the boil order in a particular segment of the distribution system. That's a little bit of a complex process, and we're kind of going to have to look at the valving situation and look at the model that the consultant develops. So I can't really answer that today, but our hope is that we can do that type of thing so we wouldn't have to issue a system-wide boil order, that we could respond specifically to the area of concern.
And is there, when you say that you're going to have a website with notification of the different sections, is that going to be, I mean, how far in advance would that information be displayed?
I am waiting for the information by the end of this week. By the time that we start flushing, September 22nd, I would say a couple days' notice, I will have it on the website, and we will notify the public when that's available through E-Alerts, you know, any way that we can. So by September 22nd, I would, you know, it'll be easy to find on the website.
And you said this project may take an extended period of time to complete. Do you have any kind of estimation what that extended period, is it like four weeks, six weeks?
I would say, do you want to speak to this?
Let me give you a little bit of background. This is not an easy project. And from our experiences with other communities that have similar problems, sometimes it's two steps forward and one step back. So you may flush an area, and then some of their indicator things that they're going to be monitoring, they may get high pHs or high turbidities that creep back up in the zone that they just flushed. So they may have to back up a step, re-flush that area, then proceed on. So the information that they're going to provide on the website's going to be real critical for you to watch because, you know, it may look like they're going to get done in a month, and it, you know, that may be, you know, five weeks instead of four weeks or something of that nature. But I can tell you from my perspective, I've been real impressed with how they've proceeded with this project. So I think it's probably going to be sooner than later. I'm thinking that some of the indication that we've seen in some of the monitoring data that they're looking at in terms of this chemical that they're feeding is showing some pretty positive signs in the system. So that makes me pretty hopeful that they'll be able to stay on schedule.
And could you give me any kind of estimation of the likelihood that a boil order would exist?
That's a loaded question.
That's a really, that's a really tough question to ask for a system that's not doing flushing. You know, we have boil orders that occur all over the state all the time. And the boil order isn't, I know you've got a business, and that affects, you know, your business more so than, you know, a resident, but that's a tough question to answer. You know, the process for the boil order is, if they have an indication that there's total coliform present, that's just an indicator bacteria. That's not necessarily a harmful bacteria. So we use that as an indicator, and we say, okay, if it's present once, let's do an upstream, a re-sample, and a downstream sample. If all three of those are good, then they don't have to do a boil order. We figure it's just an anomaly. If they, if it shows up again, then you have to do the boil order because we've had two indications that there's a risk to the system that we haven't thoroughly been able to evaluate.
I guess I was just wondering, because you said you'd done this in other communities, so I just wondered what the past history had shown you in other communities compared to ours.
I think it's hard to compare your community to some of those other communities because of the resources that these folks have already devoted. I think they're a lot more on top of it. This directional flushing process is extremely important to this process, and it's not necessarily a cheap or easy thing to do. But it's key to resolving the problem, and some of the other places that we've had this issue have not had the wherewithal to get this done in this manner. So they've kind of done flushing in the more conventional manner, which tends to not be as effective as directional flushing. So I, I'm hopeful that they won't have to issue a boil order. And if they do have to issue a boil order, I'm hopeful that we can figure out a way to keep it as a zone as opposed to issuing a system-wide.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions out there?
I'm Lydie Strunk, and I live at 536 Mathis. One comment, as I walk with a group of 10 ladies, and two or three have never gotten notices. The blue paper, they didn't get anything. There's one who doesn't get a paper, so she didn't know that until I started talking to them. Also, there's two or three of us who don't have computers, so we're not going to know what's going on. So how are you going to address the people who don't have computers and who need to know about the boil order? The last one you had, I was telling them, there's a boil order out, and they're going, what? Where? Who? What? And they had no idea what's going on.
With respect to your last comment about the boil order, I mean, we obviously learned a few things. You know, we tried to hit every avenue we could to get that message out. I think we did a pretty good job. This time with the latest letter, we did send that to all 615-50 residents. So that got sent out from another company to hit every resident, even, you know, outside the corporate limits. So we wanted to get to everybody. So if they didn't get it, I'd be interested to know how, you know, they didn't get it. I know my wife got it and still threw it away, but, you know, hopefully, people got it. We put it on blue paper, they would stick out, and we put a message on it, important information about your drinking water. Obviously, there's still going to be some concerns with that. We are going to try to put mailings, not with respect to the boiler, because those are going to be time-sensitive, but we are going to put some stuff in the utility mailings. So if you're a utility customer for the Village of Morton, we'll try to give some updates in that with a mailing. So when you get your utility bill, make sure, you know, if there's other stuff in there, to read through that. Other than that, E-Alerts is a big one. Obviously, some people don't have the availability. But E-Alerts, especially on your mobile device, that is the quickest way to get the latest up-to-date information. The other thing we do do is Paul and the Water Distribution Group, they will put signs up at locations throughout the village, so as people are driving home and they're not aware, that would be almost like our last line of defense, to try to get everyone we can, especially on some of the collector streets, and putting those in, in those locations. The last boil order did not get on the TVs like I had hoped. We're going to really work that to try to get that on the ticker, at least, at the bottom.
They didn't even run across the TV, we didn't know about it.
Yeah. But that was faxed through our typical, typical way we do things, and unfortunately, it just didn't get it put out there. But we will follow up in the future on that to make sure it hits the TVs, too.
The government access channels, too, Craig.
The government access, yes.
We always update those and put live, especially a boil order thing, that will wind up on those. There's a Comcast channel and an ITV3 channel.
I think sometimes I've seen someone TV, you have a message, you have a message, and something just goes to this channel. Which if I see that, I usually do that. I don't know how many other people do. My other question is, if you do have a boil alert, and some people aren't getting it, and they're drinking the water, is that going to be harmful to them?
When we issue a boil order, Illinois is much more stringent than most states in the country. We issue preventive boil orders. We do it proactively. Again, the total coliform bacteria is not a harmful bacteria. It's an indicator bacteria. So if the boil order is based upon a total coliform detection, this boil order is an advisory boil order. Another thing that we issue boil orders for, and I don't know that you guys have had one in my recent memory, is if there's a loss of pressure.
We've had one, Dave.
Yeah. I mean, you know, so, you know, we try to do boil orders as a line of defense, an added level of protection. Now, for me to say that, you know, if you miss a boil order, you know, it's not something that's important, that's not true. I think, you know, word of mouth, you know, if you can help people, or people can help you, if neighbors can communicate, oftentimes, the best, best location to find out information on what's going on is a coffee shop in my town. So, you know, the communication that people have, this is a, this is a issue that every time we have a boil order somewhere, and Steve works in the regional office, this is a common problem. You know, everybody tries to do due diligence and get the word out as best they can, and I think there are several means of media here, so we're hopeful that, you know, they're doing the best they can. And I think the term is due diligence, and I think they're, they're taking every due diligent matter at hand, so. But yeah, I mean, it's, I, to say it's not important, if you get a boil order to boil your water, that's not true. I think you should boil your water for five minutes, and you've got that added level of protection.
Well, that's just if you're drinking right or cooking.
Correct.
Yeah. Because I know the last time I had a boil order, I was at Walmart, a whole bunch of people buying water, and somebody goes, why are you buying all this water? I go, there's a boil order. And she goes, what? I never heard about that. So she's grabbing one or two. That's my main concern, is that people won't get notified, because I notified two of my neighbors, and they had no clue.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't have TV on during the day, they're at work. People don't have computers.
And we share your concern, and we've had talks internally, how do we get this message out best? I really think the best one, at the end of the day, for those people is word of mouth, but also, like I said, the signs that we will put out at, you know, the main collector streets to say, it basically says, there's a citywide boil order.
And if you know somebody that, I mean, you know, as a good citizen, if you know somebody that does, that's elderly or something, that doesn't get that information readily, you know, walk across the street and tell them. I think that's great.
The lady across the street, I don't, you know, I just knock on her door, you know, hey, you know this boil order? And she doesn't know. I says, well, here, here. Well, she doesn't get, she doesn't read the paper that much. She's like, you know.
Sure.
So there's a lot of reasons for people who are elderly, and they're not out and about, or they're, I mean, even when you have the signs out saying boil order, a few people said they didn't even see them, and I'm going, oh.
Yeah, they're not getting out of their house.
Yeah. So those are a concern for them.
No, we can take that into consideration, Craig, that we can add it to the notice of the boil order, you know, tell your neighbors. It's a good thing to do, you know, just being neighborly, basically. We can add that to our notice. Please, if you know a neighbor that doesn't read the paper, doesn't get the paper.
I know a couple stores had signs on their doors saying boil order. And I thought that was a good idea, because you're trying, I mean, you're trying to get more people, but that was kind of my concern, if you've got elderly, their news isn't as bad, and they don't know about it.
You know, and I think this was in probably the mailing that was sent out by Morton. You know, folks that are immune compromised and have a vulnerability anyway, should really consult with their physician anyway with respect to their, you know, susceptibility, and what, what type of water should they be using.
Yeah.
You know, so those folks, those folks should be real conscious of that anyhow.
Yeah. Why don't know how many people didn't get the thing. My son didn't get one, and I told him, he goes, I didn't get one. He goes, well, let me check it home. And he said, no, I didn't get one, so. And I don't know how that got missed, but I think one of the ladies I walked with said they didn't get one, and I'm like, well, it's a blue paper, go check your mail or something.
We made the decision to hire a company to just send them out to all, everyone in the ZIP code 61550, with the intent that we would hopefully get everybody that way and not miss everybody.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Gentlemen, good evening. Appreciate your hard work. My name's Gary Fisk. I live 111 Woodcrest Avenue here in Morton. How do you filter our water?
We have what is called manganese-green sand filters. It's a pressure filter. It's a chemically-treated sand. It exchanges with potassium permanganate that's added. It exchanges iron and manganese into, out of the water into the filter media.
This is a system that you change out periodically?
Hopefully, no. It's, they're supposed to last 20 years. It's a lot of physical labor to clean out the filters and replace them.
What kind of a backdoor question to you. Our plumber suggested about a year ago that we put in a house filter in our water system. And he said, well, you know, you're probably going to have to change this filter about every six months. And I've been changing it about every four to five weeks. If I use a white filter, it turns brown. If I don't change it quick enough, my water pressure goes way, way down. Once this system is completed, is that going to have any effect?
It should help lengthen the life of those filters, but also, the filter you're putting in your house is probably like a four and five micron filter. That's a lot finer.
It's 10,000 to 20,000.
Yeah. It's a lot finer than anything we can filter. The electricity it would take to push up, to have the pump push the water through that kind of filter would be tremendous. What we call head, the pressure against that pump, it would, it would really increase our electric bill tremendously. We can't do it. We can't remove all of the iron from our water. What happens is, our piping system becomes a giant reaction basin. Some of the iron drops out later, and you're picking it up. And you're picking it up. We, that's just the nature of the beast.
So I just need to change the?
Monitor your filter, and, and really.
No, actually, what I was going to say is, I need to change the, the number of terstes per square inch.
You could change the sizing of it.
Yeah.
But also, as a favor to us, if your filters, you notice the lifespan starting to lengthen, give us a call. That's how we know what's going on in that distribution system, is by you people telling us. You know, I, people call up to, I don't like to say complain, but they call up to complain, and I tell them, thank you. Because that way, we know what's going on out there. We can't see the pipes. And by, by you just saying that, okay, it lasts four to five weeks, or whatever, thank you. We, now we got an idea of what we're looking at.
Can I ask you a follow-up question? Have you noticed the, here recently, the lifespan on your filter decreasing in the last six weeks?
No.
Okay.
It's lasting four weeks. I just put the new one in the weekend, and it was four weeks. The leaves are 20. You don't use 10, you use 20.
It's still.
Every four to five weeks, the one that he just replaced was four weeks old.
Okay.
And it was dark, dark.
Dark brown.
Yep.
That, that may be a good sign for the distribution system. That means that may, there's a good chance that, I mean, I, I hate to be.
No, it's okay.
But what I'm, yeah, what I'm saying is, that means that maybe the chemical that we're using right now may be having a positive effect on this film that's built up on the mains. And unfortunately, you might be catching it for them.
Okay.
I mean, but.
What a public servant.
Yeah, exactly. Keeping that from going to the wastewater plant. But, you know, I would also say, at the sake of making plumbers and water treatments, private water treatment sales folks unhappy, there's, they're putting out outstanding water, and adding those types of things to your, your, your house really probably isn't necessary.
Just one quick question, may I? I forgot what I was going to ask. The, the, oh, yeah, in the paper, we said it was a, it was a new system, and you explained what it was. It's just a new system of cleaning for Morton. This has been in existence for a while? Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, we're not guinea pigs.
No.
No, not at all. The product that we're feeding, we started feeding late July, is a product that Water Solutions supplies. They're a company that supplies throughout many communities in Illinois. And we definitely relied on their, you know, situations with other communities to decide on that product. And Water Solutions has been a consultant of ours for many years on many different solutions.
In addition, we issue, we review anything that's added to your water, and there's a, there's a national certification process for water treatment chemicals. And if it's not certified, then we don't issue the permit for you to add it. So that's been reviewed by our permit engineers.
I'll keep you informed. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Andrea Roth, 2615 North Morton Ave. Hi, Bob.
Hello.
I talked to you yesterday.
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Yeah, thank you. I want to say thank you first off to all of you for the transparency and the flood, wink, wink, of information. So I have a little bit of a different concern, I guess, than most folks. I know the boil order is very important, but my concern is chlorine. And so I know it's necessary for the disinfection. The other thing, I've been doing a little bit of research on my own, and I found out that, you know, after chlorine hits the organic particles that you folks are trying to get rid of for us, thank you, it does turn into what's called the DBPs. It's just the disinfectant byproduct, which is definitely toxic. I think it's, I don't know the actual number, I believe it was 100 times more toxic. So, than chlorine by itself, which is not toxic so much, just that it dries your hair out and all of that kind of thing. But, so, it's a twofold question, in that, you know, I don't know if our chlorine levels have increased, and I'm wanting to know if they have, and when they will go down maybe after this. And then second, all, this chemical that we're talking about, Oracle, I'd like to know more about that as well.
As far as the disinfection byproducts you're talking about.
Yeah.
With the organics and the chlorine mixing, they're required to do sampling, in particular, total trihalomethane and haloacetic acid. Or the, and a matter of fact, they just sampled for those in August. And those, the sample results are way below the maximum contaminant levels.
Is that gaseous also that they're testing for? So we're talking about when it's sitting in my toilet bowl, and the gas that's coming off of that, when it's hitting the air?
No.
Okay. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about when I'm in my shower, and it's coming out, and, you know, it's the fumes.
Well, if it's, if it's not in this test, it can aerosolize.
Okay, perfect.
This is the, the, I mean, a portion of, of what is present can aerosolize, so, but if it's not there to begin with
in the distribution sample, then you can't obviously have more of it present in what's coming out the showerhead. Yes.
So, those, those test results are also available on our drinking water, Illinois EPA's Drinking Water Watch website.
Is that for?
Anybody can get on it.
And it shows for Morton specifically?
Yep.
Okay.
You type in, I think you might be able to give it a county, a county, Tazewell County.
I think you could just type in Morton under the facility name, and it'll pull it up, yeah.
Okay, excellent. And then the Oracle chemical, can you tell me more about what that actually is? I know we say it's not toxic, but I just want to know what it is.
I mean, it, it is, like I said previously, it's a chlorine enhancer too, so I don't want to take away that fact. I, I can get more information on that too, if you.
I do, yeah.
You know, product data sheets, whatever.
I think I've got the MSDS sheet here.
Do you have that with you?
Well, I thought I did, let me look.
It's available on.
I couldn't find anything, and I'm a Googler. Like, I can find stuff. And I, I could not find anything.
Dave just recently said, you know, before they can start to feed this, they have to go through a permit process with the EPA, which, you know, they submit the MSDS sheets. We review it, you know, for every chemical or every change in their treatment process. And, you know, the construction permit for it was issued, and the operating permit, the subsequent operating permit. So, you know, it's been through the permit process. And I'm a field engineer in this region, the Springfield region, and there's, you know, I can't give you a definite. There's several community water supplies that feed this orally. So.
Okay.
If you try Googling Water Solutions Unlimited Incorporated.
I did. And it's actually Quality Water Solutions, is that, I think, the actual name of the company, right?
Water Solutions Unlimited.
Okay.
Water Solutions Unlimited.
I'll call them, I call people, so I'll call them, Bob.
And afterwards, if you have more at the office.
Okay.
I've got some more information, if you're interested.
Awesome. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
There's your phone number, if you want it.
Oh, okay.
You can come up.
I'll give you that sheet too, that might help you out.
Excellent, thank you so much.
So with that, if anybody else wants, you know, product data sheets or whatever, feel free to contact us. We'll have that stuff on the website, so we can get that for you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Andrea. Any other questions? With that, does anybody have any public comments? Just to come up to the podium, make a comment.
Okay. As a restaurant owner, and just as you're, you are governed by the IPA and their regulations, we are governed by the Tazewell County Board of Health and their regulations. And I just kind of wanted to make the board aware of the seriousness of a boil order. If you're not, if you've never been in the restaurant business, and it doesn't really even have to be a restaurant. It could be, you know, a, a fast food restaurant. It can be a gas station. It can be a coffee house. You know, you talked about, when you get together for coffee around coffee, talk about the boil order. Unfortunately, most coffee machines are tied into the water system. So it's all automatic, your dishwashing, your sanitation, the ice. We're required to drain our water heaters, to drain our ice machines. And when you call this boil order in January, our really only solution was to close the business. And I was kind of surprised to see other businesses not close. So when I called Tazewell County today, I asked them what kind of regulations were done with that, because any fountain drink in a gas station is hooked up to the water system. And if you're not supposed to use the water, you're not supposed to use the ice, you're not supposed to get the fountain drink, the coffee, any of those things. And I just wanted to stress the importance of, not that I don't understand that you need improvements, and this has to be repaired, and there is a possibility of a boil order, but it's more than just an inconvenience for the business owners. It's a lack of revenue for the business and for the employees, because most of those people are hourly wages, and they don't get paid if they don't work. So I just want to stress the importance of that, and, and try to minimize or make us aware of further regions possibly, so that we can make adjustments to our day. Like, when this happened last time, we were right in the middle of preparation for dinners. So it just became an impossible task to boil the water. And, you know, we're supposed to even have water to wash employees' hands. That's part of the regulations of the Board of Health. You're supposed to get outside water. And I know people were running to Kmart and Walmart buying water, but, you know, that's not a possibility for any restaurant or any place that serves food. And I'm not just talking about people that have paper or plastic. It's also any, any tap, any ice, any product. So I just want to make that aware for all the businesses here in Morton that serve any kind of food or beverage, gas stations, taverns, convenience stores, whatever. So I brought you a copy of the Tazewell County.
And if I could add to that, you know, we do obviously realize the inconvenience.
Morton didn't.
She's, she's kind of hitting home on really why we're being proactive instead of reactive. We understand the extreme inconvenience to restaurants. With that, you know, the Department of Public Health, in a boil order, that's our first phone call. They contact all the businesses due to the seriousness of it. So our first phone call in the event of a boil order is to the Department of Public Health, and they will get with them because of those strict.
Very strict.
So, so we do understand that, and that's a big reason why we're having this meeting is, you know, it is an extreme inconvenience, and we want to reach out, because I know exactly what you said. We did look into that. We know some of the restaurants that were open, that took those precautions to be, you know, at least get through the inconvenience the best they could. We realize some can't. But that's why we're reaching out, so that you are aware.
Right.
And take any.
And I think, it might have been mentioned earlier, I was talking to Craig and Bob earlier, and what we're going to try to do, they, they're required to have a sample site plan for their bacteriological sampling. And we're going to try to alter it or change it a little bit, so that we can, hopefully, when we have a problem, and we can isolate a smaller area, you know, instead of the system-wide boil orders, which may be beneficial to, maybe not all businesses, but for some businesses, minimize the impact of that boil order. And we're, you know, we're hoping to put this together here in the next week or so.
Yeah, because people don't want to, you know, we want to err not on, on the side of safety, so that's why we're closed.
Right, right.
And, and to follow the regulations that we have been, you know, instructed to. And so it's not real, it's not really an inconvenience, it's like life-altering for people who, you know, work for a paycheck, and now they've lost hours. So if we could do some kind of notification that we could switch things around, or at least be notified of the areas of a potential in that area, that would be really helpful.
And I'll echo Steve, you know, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, this is not a mandated meeting. This is these two gentlemen stepping up and be willing to be here with us as a team, and work through some of the concerns you have. So I appreciate these two guys. We're working really hard, investing a lot of money behind the scenes, and they're jumped in right with us, trying to offer solutions to our difficult questions, which are very similar to yours.
Similar to your questions.
Right.
What can we do?
And I think I can speak for Dave. If we, if all of our community water supplies would work with us like Morton has, our jobs would be a lot easier. You know, there's, there's communities out there that would fight us, you know, head to head for a long time about, you know, something like this. But, you know, we were notified by them, and so we've been working with them for, you know, two or three months now. Hopefully, we'll all get it taken care of in the next few months.
Well, I think we all have the same go-to, which is the safety of the public.
Right.
And making sure everything is, is the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Carl Hilbert, and since I've got you people here, it's not in, due to the quality of water, but I'd like to know, after you use your fire hydrants flushing and everything, who goes back and checks and makes sure that there's no water in the barrel, so it freezes in the wintertime?
We check that while we're there. That, we make sure it does drain at that time.
It does drain, and it's not leaking.
Yes.
Well, okay.
Yep. Now, if you see one, you know, be sure and call us, because things do happen.
Well, I got one right across the road from my house. And like last winter, there was a house down, I think, in Havana area. Two hydrants were frozen. Fire department went to two different hydrants. And I just thought, I've never seen anybody come back around, drop the rope with the lid on it down in the barrel to make sure there's no water in that barrel. And so I, I worked in security at Caterpillar, and we checked the fire hydrants once a month to make sure the barrel was dry, especially in the fall of the year. And I don't see that going on in Morton.
That's what we do, and we do our biannual flush. That's when that gets checked.
Very good. So as I'd sure hate to have my house burned with a frozen fire hydrant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to, you know, just state that we do have an active maintenance program with fire hydrants. Unfortunately, we have had several, I've been here about three years, we've had several very large fires. I will say that our fire hydrants did work in those cases. So that is a huge concern of ours, and we do have an active maintenance program with that. Any other comments? All right. Well, with that, I wanted to thank you all for coming tonight. And again, I wanted to let you, let you all know that please, if you have questions, comments after this, please get ahold of us. Call us at Village Hall. The website has, has a spot there where you can send a question in to us. We will respond within 24 hours. So there's a lot of methods that we can answer your questions. So please feel free to continue the questions. But with that, I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'd like to thank the two gentlemen here for coming from the EPA.
Well, thank you for inviting us. It's what we're supposed to do. You're paying our, you're paying our salary, so.
With that, this concludes the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.